Good evening, welcome to the special meeting of your Pontiac City Council for Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's hereby called to order at five o'clock PM. Could we please, excuse me, could we please have roll call, Clerk Doyle?
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jones. McGinnis.
Present.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford. Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being established. Councilman Jones is with us this evening. Councilwoman Rutherford is not expected. Could I please have a motion to excuse Councilman Rutherford from this evening's meeting for personal reasons?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Parker. Hearing no discussion, roll call Clerk Doyle on that motion.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The council members excused. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington for agenda approval. It's now before us. Any discussion or amendments? Hearing none, roll call on adoption of the motion to approve the agenda, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. We are now at public comment. Are there any requests for public comment at this night's special meeting? We will, of course, have full public comment and agenda address opportunities at the regular meeting starting at six PM. Are there any requests for public comment? Request for public comment? Request for public comment? Hearing none, we move on with the agenda. We are at a motion to go into closed session. This is a resolution to proceed in closed session pursuant to Section eight, subsection E of the Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen point two six eight, subsection E, to review and discuss a matter of pending litigation, Washington v. City of Pontiac, Oakland County Circuit Court case number twenty-five dash two one five zero two zero dash CZ, and Section eight H of the Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen point two six eight, subsection H, to consider an attorney-client privileged legal opinion from the Clark Hill Law Firm. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Jones to adopt that resolution to proceed in closed session. It is now before us. So the resolution states clearly the purpose of this. Is there any discussion or amendments? Hearing none, roll call on adoption of the resolution, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. We stand at closed session at five oh five PM. When we are done, we will come out, vote to come out of closed session, announce the time that ends, and then proceed with the balance of the meeting before beginning the regular meeting. With
Could I please have a motion to come out of closed session?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington, that we move to come out of closed session. That motion is before us. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on that motion, Clerk Doyle.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We are out of closed session at 5:37 PM. Could I please have a motion to suspend the rules to take up a resolution not currently on the agenda? It's been moved by Councilwoman Jones, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we suspend the rules for the purpose of taking up an additional resolution not on the currently approved and adopted agenda. Hearing no discussion, roll call on that motion to suspend the rules. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The rules are suspended. Is there now a motion? I'm gonna read the resolution and see if there's a move in a second. Be it hereby resolved, the Pontiac City Council accepts the recommendation of litigation counsel in the matter of Washington v. City of Pontiac, case number 25-215020-CZ, to resolve the matter. Is there a motion?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. That motion is now before us. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Okay. Hearing no discussion, roll call and adoption, Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We return to regular order. The rules, the motion to suspend is no longer in effect. We are at adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Support. It's been moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilwoman Jones, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we adjourn the special meeting. Hearing no discussion on the motion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned for the special meeting at 5:40 PM. We'll come back at 6 o'clock PM when the regular meeting will begin. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
This meeting of the Pontiac City Council for Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, the 218th session of this city council is hereby called to order. We give the floor to Councilman Parker to introduce this evening's invocation.
Thank you, Brother President. Good afternoon, everyone. Our invocation this evening will be given to us by Pastor Emeritus Cathy Deserel.
Finally. Our Father, we come before you tonight asking for your guidance, your wisdom, your plans. And Father, we ask that each person who is represented here tonight, their needs would be met, and sometimes even their wants, Lord. But what we want most of all is love and peace. It's been a tough, tough week in this city, Lord, and we need to get back to caring about each other. And we ask, Lord, that it would start tonight with this meeting, and that all who are taking part would be led by you and blessed by you, and that we would follow the direction that you have set for the city of Pontiac, for we ask it in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now, as a community, hold a moment of silence for those who was recently We now, as a community, hold a moment of silence for those who has recently passed away. I'll read the names of those neighbors now. Patrick Bell, Austin Butcher, Ruby Burford, Lenny Coleman, Shirley Davis, Cephas Horn, brother of Pontiac City Councilwoman Kathleen James, Emmett Hundley, Dean Jacobson, Mary Martin, Clifford Noel Jr., Mary Owens, Laverne Sharet, Johnny Shepard, Karen Sullivan, and David Suzor. Please join us as a community for a moment of silence in their honor. Thank you very much. And on behalf of the entire city of Pontiac, we send our deepest, deepest sympathies to you and your family, to our dear colleague, Councilwoman James. Clerk Doyle, could you please offer a roll call of city council members?
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
McGuinness.
Present.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford. Mr. President, you have quorum.
Quorum being established, could I please have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Rutherford from this evening's meetings for personal reasons?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The councilperson is excused. We are at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Moved by Carrington. Support.
It's been moved by Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilman Parker. That motion is now before us. When we go to special presentations, we had anticipated an ARPA compliance and spending update from Ernst &amp; Young. That individual that gives those updates, Mr. Brian Jarzinski, he has had a flight delay and has not arrived back in Michigan, and so is not able to make this evening's meeting. So we will have to reschedule that for an upcoming city council meeting. And then I think because the city clerk provided us a special presentation last week about the outcome of the election results that we knew, and we now have the results for the District III City Council, if he doesn't object, very briefly, he could verbally at special presentations just announce those results. So is there a motion to update the agenda, amend the agenda, and remove what was the number two and replaced it with a special presentation on the Pontiac City Council District III election results?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Jones, that we amend the agenda and update those special presentations. Hearing nothing further, roll call on that specific amendment, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is now before us as amended. And just as a procedural note, a verbal answer is fine on that special presentation, Clerk Doyle. No, no stress that we don't have a slide prepared for that. All right. Any other amendments on the agenda as discussed? Hearing none, roll call on adoption of the agenda as amended, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda is approved. We'll proceed accordingly. We're now at approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion for adoption of that consent agenda? Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Jones, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. Here are the items in this consent agenda. A, city council special meeting minutes of November 10th, 2025, including closed session minutes. B, city council regular meeting minutes of November 10th, 2025. C, resolution to authorize city clerk to publish notice of a budget amendment in the amount of $1,250,000 for the agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation LED Streetlight Conversion. D, resolution to authorize city clerk to publish notice of a budget amendment for grant funding rollovers from the previous fiscal year. E, resolution to authorize city clerk to publish notice of a budget amendment in the amount of $40,000 for the agreement with the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, or SEMCOG, for a planning assistance grant program. The city received that grant recently. F, resolution approving certification of community housing development organizations. That acronym is sometimes known as CHODOS, so that resolution approves that certification. G, resolution to enter into a long-term stormwater maintenance agreement with South Oakland Shelter, doing business as Lighthouse Michigan, in connection with the Lighthouse Campus Expansion Project. And finally, H, resolution for access and utility easement between the city of Pontiac and South Oakland Shelter, doing business as Lighthouse Michigan. Again, related to the Lighthouse Campus Expansion Project in the city of Pontiac. That groundbreaking was this last week. Hearing no requests from council members to remove an item from the consent agenda for further discussion, roll call and adoption of the consent agenda and those items, Clerk Doyle.
Jones.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda and those items are approved and adopted. We're at number one on the agenda, a resolution of the Pontiac City Council overruling the Planning Commission's denial and granting the appeal of Carnival Investments LLC for a special exception permit. This is four parcels identified on the agenda located at 1075 East Walton Boulevard. This was at the city council meeting last week. It was motioned to be postponed to this meeting, and now it is before us. And the administration is recommending or remanding or referral back to the Planning Commission, but we first give the floor to the administration to share their perspective.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I, I wouldn't say that we're recommending, remanding it back to the Planning Commission. What we're saying is that our city attorney believes that if city council wants to consider a traffic study, it legally needs to be remanded to the Planning Commission. There's nothing preventing city council from considering this matter before it without a traffic study and without remanding it to the Planning Commission. But if city council wants to see a traffic study, it is the city attorney's opinion that it then needs to be remanded to the Planning Commission. And the, the issue, as I understand it, is that city council, or at least best practice conservative legal interpretation, is that city council can only consider what was presented to the Planning Commission on appeal from the Planning Commission. So it's really a question for city council, whether city council wants to consider it and make a decision based on the record as presented to the Planning Commission, or whether if city council wants to see a traffic study, it wishes to remand it to the Planning Commission to allow for the presentation of a traffic study to the Planning Commission. Have I accurately summarized that, planning manager and attorney?
Okay. The planning manager and city attorney Castro has responded in the affirmative from the audience. Hearing nothing further from the administration, it's now before us for council for discussion deliberation. What is the sentiment of the council? Shall we consider it without any additional information, or do we wish to pursue further information and therefore remand it back to the Planning Commission? Pro Tem, then, Councilman Jones?
Yes, thank you, President McGuinness. I actually would like to make a motion to remand it back to the Planning Commission.
Well, I hear the motion in the second. Procedurally, city attorney Castro, if you can take the microphone, the resolution before us right now is the overruling. Should we postpone that resolution indefinitely, suspend the rules, then take up a new resolution, not on the agenda, that would be remanding appeal?
That would be an acceptable way to do it, or you can motion to replace the existing resolution with the resolution that's before you that does remand it back to Planning Commission. It'd be up to council. Procedurally, they both accomplish the same objective. Maybe, in my opinion, the cleaner version would be to motion to replace the existing resolution in your packet overruling with the resolution that remands it, and then make a motion on that to approve or deny that resolution.
Thank you for that clarity. So, Pro Tem Carrington, it sounds as though the motion that would most reflect your intent is that you move to replace the existing resolution with the provided language of a resolution to remand appeal to the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir.
And is that your second, Councilman Jones? Okay. So now before us, it's really just about the language substitution. It won't be the actual remanding, yea or nay. This is whether you want to make the matter before us being remanding back to the Planning Commission. So if you felt as though you wanted to vote tonight without any additional information, you would not be supporting this motion because you want still to have the resolution before us as it was. Mayor?
Minor point, but just so the record is clear, the original resolution that was on tonight's agenda has a whereas paragraph that says the Planning Commission's vote was five to zero. The resolution remanding it says the vote was six to zero. So I want to make sure that if we're voting on the accurate facts in terms of the whereas. So was it five to zero? So in that case, the resolution to remand, if we're going to vote on that, ought to be amended to reflect five to zero, not six to zero.
Thank you for flagging that. We will tackle that as a separate amendment should the motion carry. So the motion before us, again, moved by Carrington, seconded by Jones, is that the resolution to remand appeal language as presented and provided would be the new language, substitute language. Is everyone clear on the motion before us? Any further discussion on the motion of substitute language? Hearing nothing further, roll call on that specific motion, Clerk Doyle.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
No.
James.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Five yays, one nay.
All right, that motion carries. Language has been substituted. And now, flagged by the mayor, we want to make sure that the language in this updated resolution reflects the accurate record of Planning Commission, that their vote was denial by a vote of six zero. That's the language currently. The planning manager's contention is that it was five zero, based on their understanding of the record. Is that date of September 17th correct? The planning manager is indicating, signaling the affirmative that the date of September 17th is correct, just to make sure that the language reflects it. So is there a motion to amend the second whereas to say five zero instead of six zero?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right. It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. Is everyone clear on this specific amendment? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on that amendment, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
All right. That motion carries, and so the resolution as amended is amended once more. Now we're back to the matter at hand, a resolution to remand appeal to the Planning Commission. Any discussion from council members or any additional amendments? Hearing no further discussion and hearing no further amendments offered, roll call and adoption of the resolution to remand appeal to the Planning Commission for consideration of supplemental information regarding the special exception permit application of Carnival Investments LLC for a special exception permit automobile filling station and drive-through facility for four parcels, 14-10-378-012, and -013, and -018, and -019, four parcels again, at 1075 East Walton Boulevard. Roll call and adoption of that resolution, Clerk Doyle.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
No.
James.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Five yays, one nay.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted, and that matter is remanded or referred to the Planning Commission. All right. We are now at number two, special presentations. We'll give the floor to the clerk. But just as a procedural note, as with last week's city council meeting, we are encouraging residents to consider volunteering on a city board, commission, or workforce, you know, all that, all the councils and boards and commissions and volunteer opportunities. And in the hallway, Mr. James McQueen, the outreach specialist with the city of Pontiac City Council, just outside of the chamber doors, you can find out information, you can submit your information, or ask questions. That's going to be discussed later in the agenda tonight, but I want, in case anyone's going to bounce, before we get to that, feel free to visit, share information, sign up.
Okay.
Thank you. Clerk Doyle, your special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the county went through the votes that were cast for the November 4th election, the write-in votes, because when your name is not on the ballot, just for the public's clarification, and you write a name in, you fill in the bubble, you put the person's name in, the tape that prints out does not, it prints out all of the names, so you actually have to go through and hand count those votes. And that's handled by the county during the board canvassers process. So there were three certified write-in candidates, Mikel Goodman, Don Hannah, and Kenya Earl. And Mikel Goodman received 144 votes, Don Hannah received 91 votes, and Kenya Earl received 68 votes. And then 39 write-in votes were rejected, maybe not readable or something in essence to that tune. So Councilman Mikel Goodman was reelected to District III. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, with that, let's give a hand to Councilman-elect Mikel Goodman on his reelection. And you have the floor, sir.
I just want to say I appreciate it. I am happy to have been chosen by my neighbors, many of which have become friends over time, to continue doing the work that I've been doing for the last four years. So thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, we'll move now to public communications. First, city retirees' enhanced pension benefits update. This is from the order granting preliminary approval in the previous months. Quote, "A hearing shall be held at 2:00 PM on December 9th, 2025, in room 767 of the Theodore Levin United States Courthouse, 231 West Lafayette Boulevard, Detroit, Michigan, 48226, to consider any objections to the settlement agreement and to determine whether the settlement agreement should be finally approved," emphasis, "finally approved," "as having been negotiated in good faith and as being fair, reasonable, and in the best interest of class members." So as previously shared, that preliminary approval, that hurdle was cleared. This is the final step, as we understand it, the final step in the judicial process, and that order, we, I hope, pray, and will continue advocating for, will be found favorable and that that order granted. And with that, we will find out specific information on timeline to follow. So that's the first communication. Relatedly, at our next city council meeting, December 2nd, leadership from the city's General Employees Retirement System, or GERS, will be here to speak about what are the practical next steps that they are anticipating and try and answer some of the frequently asked questions that impacted retirees have been calling them or that they know it in the process so far. So again, that's a special presentation at the next city council meeting, December 2nd. Tune in if you'd like to learn more. C, the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Bridge Reconstruction Project update. You know that the city council awarded that contract in recent weeks, so that bridge builder is moving forward. They have successfully got the permit from the railroad to allow that work to happen while the railroad's still running every day underneath it. And what has been shared from the Public Works Director is that, Director, that the demolition work is anticipated to begin before this year is done. So when we have those exact dates, we'll include it in future updates. And as the city councilperson for District 7, in these remaining 40 days, I'll make sure that the Charles Lane residents, the Bloomfield Townhomes, that I pay them a visit and make sure that all the residents know when we have exact dates and timelines and who they can contact if there's any problems or issues. All right. Auburn Avenue Road Construction, another District 7 issue. The construction season is coming to an end, so you know that work has been done on Auburn because of the weather change that's coming. They'll be putting a pause on that and revisit it in the spring. All lanes will be open in that meantime. So I saw this afternoon, Auburn, all four lanes and both, you know, two lanes in either direction is open again, right in front of City Hall. That'll be the case. That'll be the case for the full length of Auburn, not including where the Phoenix Center was. All right. E, I give the floor to Councilman Jones, who represents District 2, for some substantial news and good news about road construction in her council district.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Voorhees is finally on the rise to open up, repaved, new concrete reed, curb installed, sidewalks completed. And that will be coming within the next, really, the next week. The initial timeline outlined, having this work completed before Thanksgiving, and I will be in contact this week to confirm that that is still happening. But just to review, there will be remediation going on through Voorhees, Genesee, and Chippewa. I want to say that was the other street. Those roads have been used for storing those heavier machinery and moving them back and forth. That way, those trucks don't drive right over the new paved roads that you will see throughout those areas. Extending through, you'll notice that Ruth is already paved, east side of Hazel from Telegraph. They didn't want to take those trucks back down those roads once they had been paved. So they left Genesee and Cherokee, my, excuse me, not Chippewa, Cherokee, open for that truck route. But the first layer of asphalt, if you've passed by there, has been applied. And the final coat will be going on within the next week. Going over to Indian Village, if I may expand that to the rest of District 2, in the Indian Village subdivision, the crews will be installing the new asphalt, concrete curbs, concrete curbs, and then will be doing sidewalks, and then will be doing the initial asphalt layer as they have done with Voorhees and other areas around Ottawa Hills. And it's important to note that when they do apply that tack coat, they, they being the WRC, is requesting drivers to keep it around 10 miles per hour. That tack coating can stick to your car. It's very troublesome to deal with, and it can be avoided if you stick to driving 10 miles or less per hour and avoid sharp, quick turns. And that's only for the first 24 hours. So in these final days, I'll be working to get that direct update for the timeline of when that tack coating will be applied, to be sure that residents are aware of that, when that 24-hour window will begin. But we are at the finish line of these District 2 WRC updates for this year. Thank you, President McGinnis.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. This next update covers both Districts 3 and 6. Since Councilman Goodman has stepped out, Pro Tem will pitch hit and share Communication F.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Repair its portions of Baldwin Bennett Cadillac Harriet Home, Howard Poplar, Rundell, Trigent Streets, and.
And the area.
Vicinity, having lay service lines repaired, and construction begins later this week.
Thank you very much. G, groundbreaking, as we shared, for Lighthouse Campus expansion took place last week. And H, free carbon monoxide detectors with, which include smoke detectors, are available for free from the city still. I, Deputy Mayor, do you want to address Communication I in terms of the Thanksgiving holiday?
Yeah, yeah, so I had to see which one I was. Yes, thank you, Council President. So in recognition of the Thanksgiving holiday, City Hall will be closed on Thursday, and it will be closed on that Friday afterwards. And on that Saturday, we encourage everyone to participate in Small Business Saturday activities, shopping at Pontiac-based businesses.
Thank you. And in that vein, the city is partnering with Pontiac Entrepreneurs. There will be an event on Saturday, November 28, 29, excuse me, from 1:00 to 5:00 PM at the Strand Theater downtown. Again, a Small Business Saturday, Business Expo on the 29th, 1:00 to 5:00 PM at the Strand. The next regular Pontiac City Council meeting is on Tuesday, December 2nd. The final scheduled meeting of this year is scheduled for December 16th. So two final meetings of this city council are on the books formally, December 2nd and 16th. I will share that schedules permitting, we may do a special meeting if the order of the judge says that we have to update some ordinances regarding retiree increased pension benefits, that we may build in a new special meeting to accomplish that because that court, court order is likely to come in between our two remaining meetings. But if that's something that can still be accomplished at the early January meeting, we want to just make sure that we don't miss the opportunity to, to put that issue to bed for our city's retirees and codify it with any ordinance changes that the judge may order. All right, speaking of judges, we have some news in the 50th District Court. The city of Pontiac's District Court covers our entire city. The Honorable Judge Jeremy Bowie has been named by the state as the new chief judge for the 50th District Court. The Honorable Cynthia Walker still remains a judge on the 50th District Court, but she had submitted her request that she not be the chief judge, and the state honored her request and chose Judge Bowie to serve as chief judge. And that's effective January 1st of next year. So I want to make sure that the community and council was aware of that. Speaking of January 1st, again, a reminder, and all are invited, the swearing-in ceremony for our next mayor and city council is set for January 1st, 2026. We consider different dates, but that's not the most viable date. It will be held at the Pontiac High School Auditorium at Arlene and Madison, starting at 11:00 AM. So after the formal ceremony in the auditorium, reception in the, the school to follow. And with that, we are now at public comment. Are there any requests, Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Dr. Diggler Waterman.
Right.
Save your money and watch your spending Pontiac, Michigan, for the years 2026 and 2020 to 2029. We're about to experience some rough times. I advise, if you live in Pontiac, Michigan, and, and you, you might have to live like you're in survival mode. Take care of your business when it comes to your city taxes, your car and house insurance. Homeowners, keep your house and yard in cold. This goes for renters. Save your money. If the taxes go up, your complex or landlord will have to make it up somehow, so that means higher rent. Let's all remember, we also have to eat. Also, prepare for unwanted projects coming to your neighborhoods. This is my property, and I will use it as a visual. When people send out literature to you when they run for office, look for quality versus quantity. Yes, you may see many pages, but it's not how many pages the person has, but what is on the pages. And question yourself, what do you, what you see is true. Please keep up with what's happening with your city council and mayor, because their actions are what we pay for, for their wrong decisions, mostly for their own self enrichment. Michael McGinnis is one of seven votes, one seven of all votes that bring things to Pontiac. This fact leads me to this statement. All these approved projects that were paid can be placed in other people's literature also, the other six. Those, these projects in here are not his ideals. He did not bring them here. He was just one vote out of seven. Pontiac's school success comment is very untrue. He, under he and William Carrington's watch, all citywide Pontiac school scores were 3% math, 14% reading, and 13% science, so they just slid over to the council. Remember, Michael was only on council for three years, and he did not accomplish all that was in his book. He just won the seven. There are questions about the general fund that remain unanswered to this day. Our ex-kids did not come from Mike McGinnis. Dr. Mona Hannah from Flint created that program. Tim Grimal introduced it to council, and they're currently sending their, Michael is one of seven of that vote. You may hear his reward, people, can you do this for me? Can I have this club say Michael is a great mayor? But keep in mind the 810 devoted for him. You voted for a convicted felon soon to be married. It's street language, a real trickster, a real froster, froster. If you don't remember anything I said here tonight, remember that thought and repeat it to yourself over again, a real trickster and a real froster. Fraud, fraud, fraud.
Thank you, Ms. Beckley.
Good afternoon. My name is Billy Swazer. I live at 1619 Marchbanks Drive in Pontiac. And I'm sorry Kathleen James is not here right now, because I wanted to ask her, is she part of our Neighborhood Association Board, Home Improvement, Homeowners Board? Because what has happened in the last few weeks is that we have had these red and green wands that sit on by the curb or in your driveway. If you're improving your driveway or you're marking your driveway for the winter, you put that down so you know where that street, where the curb is and where the sidewalk is. I'm just concerned because I know that I've been there 21 years, well, more than that, 24 years. But has, but the Neighborhood Homeowners Association charges us for cleaning the streets, snow removal, and they don't do it. They'll sit there and wait for the city trucks to go by, clean the streets, and then they take credit for it. I don't need to be billed twice for something that's one person is doing. So I will be calling you. If I hear those trucks on the street, I'm gonna get up and see if I can find those trucks and see if they're doing the work or if the city's doing the work. Because those vehicles that do it for the homeowners association, it's one of, are related to the persons that run the homeowners association. I don't need them to get paid twice. Then we're billed on our homeowners dues for them cleaning up like they're cleaning the homeowners association. I'm glad, Ms., Ms. James, I'm glad you came back in. What I want to know is are you a part of the homeowners association board? Because I would like to know that they're not cheating us. You don't bill me twice for something that the city's doing, because I pay city taxes in order to get the streets approved, and they don't seem to know when they do this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swazer.
First of all, I would like to thank Brenda Carter for beginning the initiative for the homeless that has now blossomed into a much bigger initiative. And the meeting that was held this past week was it, it very, we learned a lot of things. And we've seen all the new people that are involved, and that's good. We need even more eventually. But every step forward is a step forward, but I wanted to thank Brenda for that, because she was in the beginning. And then something I do every Thanksgiving at our last meeting. Bless this house, oh Lord, we pray. Make it safe by night and day. Bless the walls so firm and stout, keeping want and trouble out. Bless the roof and chimney tall. Let thy peace lie over all. Bless the doors. Bless the door that it may prove ever open to joy and love. Bless these windows, shining bright, letting in God's heavenly light. Bless the folks who dwell within. Keep them pure and free from sin. Bless us all, that one day we may dwell, oh Lord, with thee. Have a blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Pastor Kathy Deserol.
Yeah, good evening. I want to say first and foremost that I appreciate each and every person in Pontiac who came out and participated in our election process. I really appreciate it. I became laser focused over the last few months to say how we can save Pontiac votes. We improved a needle, but we're not where we should be still. We got a long way to go. We was less than 18% of the total people voting in Pontiac that should have voted, and we got to do better. But we improved. And thanks to the clerk's office and the staff people, I think they did an excellent job. Now, I want to say, anybody who really know and support the democratic process, that after election, the most important thing we can do is come together in this city. And all those who have been elected, I hope that that's in your heart, to pull this city together and see how we can make the best opportunity for us to go into a direction that's beneficial for all. One of the things that's been clear to me, because I came back to this city as being a child of this city, that sometimes the people from this city seem like you don't always want to recognize the people from this city when they come back to try to give. The last administration, when they came in, I came forefront to this council, to do mayor, and talked about workforce development. This is nothing new. We didn't pull the trigger. We waited, we waited. Community benefit agreement don't have anything to do with workforce development. It's so important to this city that all the new elected officials, I challenge you to not to do it in a silo. Let's do it collectively. And I am willing to bring all my resources that I've gathered over the last 10 years about workforce development. If anybody gonna say that, I don't know the ins and outs, I'm not gonna say I know everything, but I know about workforce development and how it could benefit our city. And I'm challenging any and every elected official to less incorporate the residents in this process so the residents in our city can benefit from it. It's one of the most key things, we talking about all this growth that we're doing. If we don't implement it and get our people ready for the opportunity, we're missing the boat. So right now, I'm all about trust, how we can come together and be a collective body and win in this city, especially as elected officials, especially. All this divisiveness, and hey, we got to put that behind. The election has been spoken, and I'm going to challenge all elected officials to step forward and act that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Good afternoon, council, deputy mayor, mayor, and Clerk Doyle, and citizens of Pontiac. I'm Beatrice Wright. I live at 1268 Oaklawn Drive in Pontiac, and I'll start with that. Because in my community, at the entrance, there are, there were two streetlights out. Now there are three streetlights out. I reported this almost a year ago and spoke at length to someone in building and safety and another department. And even then, she told me that it had already been reported, and it will be fixed. I don't know what it takes to fix a streetlight, but it doesn't make for safe passage when I come home late or any of my community members come home late, and so I hope you will address that. Also, before I move on, I don't know if we mentioned the passing of Arthur Wiggins last week. I just wanted to say a word about Arthur. I am a longtime resident of Pontiac. Arthur attended Jefferson Junior High School. I attended Jefferson. He was a little older than me. And he graduated from Pontiac Central, as I recall. Arthur was a wonderful person, and I'm saying this on behalf of the community and his family and his friends. He was the kind of person, you've seen him, when they smile, their eyes twinkle. Arthur's eyes twinkled when he smiled, and he was such a gentleman. And so I want to say that on behalf of my family, and I hope this family in Pontiac And so I want to say that on behalf of my family, and I hope this family in Pontiac, that he knows, that they know, that we have them in our prayers. Moving on, several weeks ago, through the collaboration between Oakland University and the Golden Opportunity Club of Pontiac, which meets at the Bowen Center, a organization called Citizen Scientist was established. We completed some research, and the professors, we deferred to them, presented our findings. One thing that we discussed during the research was with a group of people who attend the center, and would you talk about things you like in the center? We also interviewed people who don't attend and what we could do to help them attend. We talked to people who are active but don't attend, and why don't you attend the center? But we talked to four different groups. And I wanted to just ask that as we look to funding different things, one of the things that we need at the Golden Opportunity Club is a bingo machine, nine hundred and eighty dollars on Amazon. It is a digital machine because that was one of the things people love about the Bowen Center. Thank you very much. I have a whole lot more, but I didn't get to it.
All right, thank you. Codrad Colwell? Connie Culture Kids? Ms. Darlene Clark?
Good afternoon, council and administration, and Mr. Garland. Mine's is very simple tonight. As one thing, first, let me say to council, thank you for showing the businesses in Pontiac that when they come to have, to challenge or to, I can't even find the right word. Appeal, thank you, Carlton, thank you. To appeal a project that's from planning, thank you for sending it back to planning. You have showed the people in Pontiac at this minute that you do hear them. Businesses cannot come back here and think they can get away with what they want to get away with. So thank you for that. But another thing I actually come here to say too, is there any way, I don't know if this is administration or a code or, you know, whoever, could you announce to the residents of Pontiac the last day for street cleaning, the last day for trash pickup, the last day that the administration's gonna do things for the residents of Pontiac? We get a lot of question on that, so we decided to bring it to council to make an announcement.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. That concludes public comment, President McGinnis.
All right, we are at recognition of elected officials. Are there any current elected officials that we should give an update from their role? Seeing none, we are now at agenda address, pro tem any requests?
Yes, Dr. Dujrow Waterman? Mr. Chris Norcross, what item? Pastor Kathy Deserol, is it item?
Item one.
One, okay, thank you.
I don't speak to the agenda very often, but this one's pretty personal because it's in my neighborhood. I've been, since last week, spending a lot of time sitting in the parking lots around Giddings Road. Do you have any idea how many children cross that intersection at Giddings and Walton? I was surprised. I know there's a lot of kids and there's lots of schools, but I was surprised how many of them are on foot. And some of them are young children that don't always use common sense when it comes to lights. The traffic itself, I remember in the years that I've been coming here, which is a long time now, there was a traffic study done at Giddings and Walton. I don't know how old it is now, but I, in the last ten years, and you might want to look at that, it may not be necessary to have another one, and yet it may, because there's more kids, more people going through there. That is our pass-through. The people who live up in Fieldstone, that's how they get out of there. And the third part about that particular issue is lighting. Most of you who know me know I've been bellyaching about the lights on Walton Boulevard now for ten years. Supposedly, they can't be fixed because it's an infrastructure problem and they have to do a completely new style of bulb. That's all well and good, but it's already a dark area with problems in crossing that street. It is dark area for cars who turn on there at night. I know, because I've gone over the curb more than once. You don't see the turn area there. You don't see children running around in black jackets at night. And it's five o'clock, it's not dark, it's dark, because now we have good old regular time again. I love Carnival Market. I love their food. I never ate rice in my life that I would like until I got to Carnival Market, and now I can't get enough of it. But I think we have to think about the bigger picture. And I don't want one of our kids killed. We've got enough kid problems as it is, we don't need to exacerbate them for another building. And I'm sorry to have to feel that way because I really like Carnival Market a lot. The other thing is Valentino's dining diner is having free turkey dinners from twelve to four on Thanksgiving Day, but you do need to call and let them know you're coming so they know how much turkey to cook.
Thank you. Mr. Carlton Jones, what item on the agenda?
Contractor.
You got it, of course, sir.
And also, I don't know, I got in here late. Did, did ARPA report come up today?
No.
It didn't?
No.
Okay, all right. I wanted to speak to that, too. All right. Let me say this because I think it needs to be said. A lot of people don't know the difference between commercial construction and home building construction. And then they don't always know the difference between the Brotherhood of Unionized Construction Workers. You need to not put them all in the same boat. I come from the Unionized Brotherhood, and we take safety, we take training very seriously. And I'm not saying the home builders don't, but we take it very seriously. And I support that one hundred percent, and I'm trying to encourage as many people in our city to understand it's a rigid process to become an apprentice and get through it, but there's so many benefits. And so when we put the qualifications and trying to look at contractors, that's okay, but just understand when you start talking about construction and contracting, there's two different arenas. And when you start learning about the two different arenas, you'll start seeing that how when those who choose to go the commercial side and go with the United Brotherhood of all the different trades, they're very, very distinct about safety, training, before you even hit the job. I support that one hundred percent, and I'm trying to encourage as many people here in Pontiac to try to get on that track. It's almost like college, it's not for everybody, but those who are willing to make a commitment, I know it's a process that will benefit not only them, but their families. So I just want to make sure we start putting guidelines in place that we understand the distinct differences between the commercial Brotherhood Union workers and some that maybe not. And I'm not knocking one over the other. We have a need in our home, in our city for housing, and the Home Builders Association, our great organization, but I'll tell you, the United Brotherhood, who actually put on apprenticeship programs thoroughly put safety and training in the forefront of everything they do. That's why it's sometimes difficult to go through the process, but those who commit to it, and right now is a time that they're looking to bring in people who want to engage and have a passion for it. But you all, we, need to understand that they looking for the few who are really dedicated. And I'm just gonna say this, you do not go into their apprenticeship program unless you showing a real commitment. Because from day one, you start getting paid as apprentice. Not like going to college where you gotta pay to go, they gonna pay you as they train you. So take it serious when we start pushing people towards apprenticeship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Jacob, is it Tajami or Tommy? Jacob Toomey?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'll be brief. I was here at the last meeting also speaking in support of the responsible contractor ordinance. My name's Jacob Toomey. I'm representing Michigan Labor's District Council as well as Launa Local Ten Seventy-Six, Michigan Construction Building Trades Union. And once again, I just want to say thank you for bringing this up and bringing it to second reading tonight. We're very excited that the city is going to be investing even more heavily in safety, in training, and in workforce development. And so really excited to see the discussion on this tonight, and thank you all for moving it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Beatrice Wright, what item?
Item E in public. In public communications?
Item E?
Yes. Actually, I'm speaking on behalf of a resident in, I think it's District Two, Elizabeth Lake Road, right across from Mervyn's. I don't want to give out their address because they didn't, they didn't tell me to. But that's a relative of mine, and I'm over there all the time. And I thank you for your report, that it's moving along, and we can say we're at the end of it, but it's been far too long. And it has been a piecemeal kind of work, as a lot of things in Pontiac happen. I think that we, as a council and whomever, gives out contracts, and I certainly support that the contracts we give out are given to unionized workers and representatives. But that area has been under construction for almost a year. And I hope that the timeline that you've presented now, because my sister has gotten timeline after timeline, and they have not been met. And so I hope that, that that infrastructure improvement can come to an end quickly. I had to wash my car far too many times this summer. I also want to speak on behalf of that resident, that there are these pastel streetlights. They're rose tinted, and they do not give off enough light for people to think of themselves as safe. They give off, I don't even know how much light it is, but it doesn't present you with a feeling of safety. And that certainly cannot be true for only that district. But again, I'm over there quite a lot. Finally, I wanted to say, only because I have a few minutes, I mean, one minute.
Is it on the agenda?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Well, Ms. Clark just spoke about it. I would like the city to take into consideration that global warming has impacted so many things in our lives. One thing it impacts is how long trees pre, give off chlorophyll. Chlorophyll keeps the tree green, and so trees are losing their leaves at a delayed pace. And so you have November thirtieth as the last day for yard waste. And maybe it'll be prudent that in the future, we readdress that and look at extending that a little. That's it.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Wright. Ms. Darlene Clark? What item? I couldn't hear you, ma'am.
I.
Once again, good afternoon. This is for deputy mayor, so thank you for closing the city the day after, because a lot of people always thought, why are they opening up on a, on that last day? But the question that needs to be answered or need to be made public, does this affect for trash pickup? Though the city is closed, will their trash be delayed till the following week or till that Saturday? Is there any way that you could announce sometime today how that's gonna go? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Clark. That concludes agenda address. President McGinnis?
Thank you, sir. We are at number three on the agenda, adoption of an ordinance for the responsible contractor ordinance. Is there a motion? Is there, it's been moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Parker. We give the floor to the administration for the matter before us.
Thank you. I know we discussed this at length last week, so we don't need to belabor it, but the whole point of this is to make sure that contractors with whom the city enters into contracts are responsible, that they treat their employees with dignity and respect, that they ensure safe working conditions, good benefits on the job, and that they engage in workforce development. As mentioned, under one portion of the proposed ordinance, it specifically references that contractors are to provide verification of participation in a registered apprenticeship program approved by the U.S. Department of Labor or a state apprenticeship agency. And that's under the category of workforce development and ethical practices. So this is all about making sure that employees are treated properly, that contractors are in compliance with federal, state, and local laws, and that they're investing in workforce development.
Okay, discussion from council members. Pro Tem Kerrington?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I definitely think this ordinance is a good piece of legislation, but I do have one issue, and it's concerning the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is because a lot of Pontiac businesses, I don't see them actually reaching, the small businesses, I don't actually see them being able to be connected to any workforce development programs. And I think that removes a lot of our Pontiac businesses from getting these small contracts. So what my suggestion would be to, you know, I'm gonna hear the rest of the council, is that rise in that threshold to fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars.
So to be clear, you're in two dash five three eight definitions?
Yes.
For purpose of this ordinance, the following terms shall have the meaning set forth in the section one, construction project. Any public construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, demolition, or improvement contract awarded by the city with an estimated value greater than twenty-five thousand. Are you proposing that that be amended to read fifty thousand?
Yes.
Is there a second? The move in the second, it was Jones and Parker. You got it?
Okay. So Pro Tem Kerrington is proposing amendment that changes the dollar amount, estimated value greater in that definition of construction project. It's been moved, is it though, it's on the first page?
Oh, is that, is that the, what you added to us? That's not in the agenda, that's?
No, it's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
It's been moved, is there a second? If no second?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm trying to understand his comment, but I, in my reading that, my understanding was that that would be more advantageous because smaller businesses who are able to come in at that, you know, that when you're just starting out your business, you want to take the smaller contracts and build on those. So I'm just not clear why you would think that starting at the twenty-five thousand, it doesn't mean that they are not able to move from there and go to the fifty thousand, but why would we start with fifty thousand?
So there's been a proposed amendment. If there is no second, that, that motion dies and we go back to that? It could be discussed further, but the amendment won't be before us?
I will second that motion to continue discussing.
Okay, so Pro Tem has made a motion to amend a dollar amount. Councilman Jones seconded, so now it can be discussed specifically, although we still could have gotten into questions, it just, we need to know yea or nay if the motion dies. Okay, so Pro Tem, you have the floor, and then we can have further discussion if anyone else wants to elaborate further, but.
Oh, yes. When looking at, from my perspective, when you're looking at definitions, A, construction project, any public construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, demolition, or improvement contract awarded by the city with an estimate value greater than twenty-five thousand, actually sets this ordinance in effect. So what I'm stating is that if we move it to fifty thousand, it gives us a greater opportunity for our small businesses that cannot totally meet the workforce development process of this particular ordinance. This ordinance states that to become a responsible contractor... This ordinance states that, to become a responsible contractor, you have to be connected to workforce development. Am I reading that right, President McGinnis?
To go through it, it's saying that, this ordinance applies to all construction projects as defined.
Yes.
And so, Pro Tem speaking to the definition, and to all contractors and subcontractors that will perform any portion of the work on such projects. So, if this were to adopt without any change, it would be a city or public project, it could be construction, or renovation, or alteration, and then there's a dollar amount. So, right now, anything that the city would to, project that they would do involving construction, $25,000 or above, has to have prequalification required. All prospective contractors and subcontractors that will perform work on a construction project, AKA $25,000 or above, must submit a completed prequalification questionnaire in the form provided by the city. A contractor must be certified as a responsible contractor under the prequalification process to have its bid or proposal considered. In addition, all prospective contractors must submit confirmation that the contractor maintains insurance coverage as required by law and by the city's procurement requirements. Prequalification criteria, the questionnaire shall require information on company identity and ownership, applicable license and certifications, evidence of financial capacity and bonding, project experience and references, and documentation supporting compliance with applicable health, safety, and workforce standards, as follows. So, in that whole category of safety and health compliance, those four items have to be met. In workforce development and ethical processes, those five items would have to be met. In integrity and business practices, those four items would have to be met. It spells out that that has to be in by a certain time, that there would be a scoring and certification, and going from there. And it's subcontractor compliance. Contractors must identify all proposed subcontractors at the time of bid submission, and certify that each subcontractor meets the prequalification requirements. Subcontractors must meet the same prequalification standards as contractors for the portion of work they will perform. So, and then substitution of subcontractors after the award would require city approval, and permitted only if the substitute meets the prequalification standards. So, if I understand Pro Tem's concern correctly, he's saying that that $25,000 threshold triggers and would box out some, he wants to move it to 50, so that way, there's more latitude for maybe the smaller subcontractors or contractors if they don't meet some of these, you know, 20 or so elements to become prequalified. Did anything further, Pro Tem?
Well, I just want to make sure that my key, that my key statement was around I, workforce development, ethical practice. Actually, all the safety and the health of clients, I think that all contractors should meet all those things. But, I'm really concerned about, in a registered apprenticeship program approved by the U.S. Department of Labor, or a state apprenticeship agency recognized by the U.S. Department of Labor, I just don't think that our small businesses in the city of Pontiac can meet that requirement.
Well, I understand the Pro Tem's concern about that one portion. My thought is that, rather than changing the definition in Section 2-538, subsection A1, which would change the threshold for the entire document, that there be something specific added just to Section 2I under workforce development and ethical practices. And I would also recommend that there, maybe there's some middle ground here, so rather than going from $25,000 to $50,000, that we hit, you know, $35,000, say, as a middle ground, that that section only applies to contractors who, on jobs that are greater than $35,000. It's sort of a middle ground compromise position here.
Further discussion? Councilwoman James?
Yeah, I do think that one of the positives of the ordinance is that it establishes a good baseline for professionalism. And hopefully, as we, as a city, develop contractors in this city, that if the guidelines are there, then the business people will work toward, you know, getting themselves to these guidelines. Because this is one of the problems that we've had, is that we've got very talented people in the city, but they tend not to attempt to get the necessary credential and certification that they need to be able to do business in the city. And so, having this kind of an ordinance in place, hopefully, would really help to educate our businesses and entrepreneurs starting out to understand what they need to do to really get themselves in that position where they can do business. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I do think that, I would not be opposed to increasing it, but I'm also okay with it staying at $25,000. Because I think, you know, we want to see our entrepreneurs and our contractors be able to move from, you know, for their businesses to be able to elevate. And in order to do that, you've got to think, you've got to have the necessary qualifications. And, you know, whether that means you come together, you partner with another firm, or whatever, but we, our businesses are going to have to learn those different strategies and mechanisms. And I think as long as they're not in place, people are going to just say, okay, you know, as long as I can get by without it, I won't do it.
Further discussion? Pro Tem?
Just a quick statement. I think the councilwoman probably, actually, misunderstood me a little bit. I wholeheartedly support this ordinance, so I just want to say that for record. My key concern is that I do not want to box out our Pontiac small business to meet those requirements that are probably going to be unattainable. And my only concern is the workforce development section where it says that they have to be, they have to have participation in a registered apprenticeship program approved by the U.S. Department of Labor, or a state apprenticeship agency, recognized by the U.S. Department of I can't determine how many of our businesses will meet that requirement, but I know it's going to be probably a very complicated hurdle for many of our small businesses in our community. So, I just want to put that out there. We don't have to take it up to $50,000. I'm okay with a variation as the mayor can adjust it, or that we have language that moves to give us leeway in Section 2, "Workforce Development and Ethical Practice." So, I'm not trying to complicate it. I wholeheartedly understand the importance of this ordinance.
The motion before us is the specific amendment going from $25,000 to $50,000 in that definition of "construction projects." Any further discussion on that amendment?
Also, I can remove that amendment. I mean, if...
You moved it, Councilman Jones seconded it. It's your prerogative, we either keep discussion. I hear no further discussion. I'm hearing no motion to withdraw. So, Clerk Doyle, roll call on the amendment of amending the definition.
Goodman?
No.
James?
This is amending it to the $25,000.
From $25,000 to $50,000?
No.
Jones?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Parker?
No.
Carrington?
Yes.
One yea, five nays.
Okay. We're back to the main motion, the responsible contractor ordinance. So, let's say a real, and hello Attorney Castro, is there something you want to flag for us in particular?
Yes, I just wanted to speak to Councilman Carrington's point. Those criteria in the health and compliance, that's information that the contractors or subcontractors would be, I guess, asked to provide if they have it. And if they don't, that does not necessarily exclude them from becoming prequalified. To become prequalified, you need to reach that 80% threshold per the ordinance, so it's not an automatic exclusion, they still may be able to meet it. Based on the other criteria, I just wanted to flag that, that just because they don't have that, wouldn't automatically box them out. So, at the 25 level, again, you can move it if you'd like, but that does not automatically exclude the smaller players from trying to become prequalified.
Probably the most practical impact is, I don't know how many construction, city-led projects we're going to have that are in that window, that range, but let's say it is twice as many, right? There's twice as many that are from, you know, above $25,000 versus above $50,000. So, it would change the volume of construction projects where this work would have to be verified or prequalified. And so, it really goes down to, how do you administer it? Is the workload heavier? Is it going to lead to higher number of instances of bidded projects, that there would have to be this additional review or prequalification?
Right. And again, yes. Sorry, the prequalification is good for two years, so they would only have to come in every two years to more or less reaffirm or re-qualify to become prequalified. So, those contractors and subcontractors remain prequalified per the ordinance for a two-year span.
The big question would be, let's say we're trying to build a park bathroom. It costs 200 grand, so whether it's 20 or 50, it's, you know, I'm ballparking here, but let's say that's the range that we anticipate it would come in. And the bid is posted, and no one applies because they didn't meet this, or they apply and they don't meet that. Would that then have to be rebid again unless and until there are bidders that are satisfying this prequalification requirement?
I'd have to review the ordinance a little bit closer just to confirm that, but I believe so. That is more than likely how it would have to work. But, I imagine there'd be some bidders out there. And again, obviously, ordinances could be amended, so if we want to reduce the 80% threshold for prequalification status to 75 or less, if, you know, time passes and we realize that there are some contractors that just aren't going to meet it, and we need more contractors to apply for these bids, then that's always an option in the future as well.
Councilwoman James, then Pro Tem?
I have a question about the timeline for the prequalification. If we approve this tonight, and this goes into effect, is there a timeline that businesses would have to get this prequalification?
The only requirement is that they submit the pre-questionnaire 14 days ahead of the bid. But again, staff is going to need to finalize the questionnaire and iron out the criteria that would be included in that questionnaire. So, no, short answer, is that there is not a time, but staff needs to finalize the questionnaire itself.
But, once it's approved, what I'm saying is, once it's approved, like, it's approved today, and someone submits a bid a month from now, and they have not completed all of the paperwork for prequalification, would that preclude them? Are we going to give, like, a six-month window to allow businesses, you know, before this actually officially kicks off?
The effective date, as written in the ordinance, is 30 days from approval, unless we want to immediately make it effective. And we built that 30 days in for staff to finalize the questionnaire, that's already in the works pending tonight's approval.
So, it would go into effect 30 days after approval?
Unless the council gives it immediate effect.
Mayor Grimaldi had a hint.
Yeah, just to more squarely answer President McGinnis's question, and this also goes to the attorney's point as well. If council looks at the bottom of Page 3 of the proposed ordinance, under Section 2-542, subsection B, "Certification Threshold," it says, "A contractor that achieves a score of 80% or greater on the city's prequalification scoring criteria may be certified by the city as a responsible contractor." That's what the city attorney was referencing, in terms of, folks don't have to be in compliance with every single aspect of this, as long as they hit an 80% or higher score, and thus eligible to have its bid or proposal considered. But then it goes on to say, and this is an important point, I think, to Pro Tem Carrington's concern, and to President McGinnis's question about, well, what happens if no bidder is certified as a responsible contractor? The third sentence in that subsection says, "The city expressly reserves the right, in its sole discretion and consistent with applicable law, to reject any and all bids or proposals, or to award contracts on the basis of best value, price, quality, or any other lawful evaluation factor set forth in the procurement documents." So, I think that the intent there is to provide enough wiggle room that if we don't get any bids from responsible contractors, there's some wiggle room here not to have to just punt and start totally anew, and that the city will still have some options.
Thank you, Mayor. I knew it was built in there somewhere. I appreciate you finding that reference really quick.
Councilwoman James, did you still have a hint? Are you good now? Okay. Pro Tem?
Thank you, President McGinnis. I actually thanked Attorney for explaining that to me tonight. It actually helps me make a decision. So, again, thank you. I'm okay with the ordinance.
Any further discussion? All right. Well, so, public policy is an alive and evolving process. So, if the future city council finds that, and the future administration finds that we need to strengthen it, or add more language clarity, or provide more resources, I do think we're going to have to make some staffing decisions to make sure that, especially as this gets in place, that we'll have to make that coordinated decision, so that way, we have the capacity, similar to with the community benefits ordinance that we've just adopted. It's going to require, you know, perhaps increased workload, or reshifting of work strategy, so we'll have to collaboratively move through that growing process. Councilman Jones?
Clarification question. Are you, President McGinnis, stating that this, that we would need a responsible contractor, community advisory group, such as the other, our enforcement committee among staff, to see this through? Is that what I just heard you say?
No, not in that explicit requirement, but there's, it's going to candidly require staff time, you know, it's going to require work assignment, so we'll make sure that we have the capacity for that. It's mainly just, I'm flagging it ahead of time, that when I come to the future city council and say, hey, we got some capacity challenges, that we're clear-eyed about it.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure this would not, you know, cause for an official commission.
No, unless we find over the years that that's something that, you know, is a best practice, that we want to move in that direction, so we'll just keep evaluating.
Is there any further discussion on the motion before us? Again, we're at the main ordinance itself. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the ordinance, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yea's and one nays.
That motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you. All right, we're at number four on the agenda, a resolution to enter into a construction agreement with Oscar W. Larson Services for the storage tanks at Pike Street Fire Station and Sheriff's Substation. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Parker moves, Councilwoman James seconds. That motion is now before us. The administration has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that council members are familiar with this issue in general. This goes to a motion that was previously approved by city council, where the potential contractor was unwilling to comply with city rules and regulations and contracting requirements. This proposed contractor is willing to comply with applicable city ordinances. We do have our DPW director here to speak on this in greater detail. So, take it away, Director Searls.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Yes, as the mayor stated, when we put this project out for bid, there is requirements, expectations that are laid out. When we received authorization to go, we sent a notice to proceed, and they sent us back our documents redlined, just stating straight up, they're not going to participate or attempt to qualify under our requirements. So, the next low bidder, Oscar W. Larson's, they are already qualified, they already meet all of our requirements, and so, we're ready to award this project to Oscar Larson.
Any further discussion on this motion before us? I will just state, since I live in the house next door to the Pike Street Fire Station, please don't make it explode.
These are empty tanks.
That's what they all say. All right. No, I hear you. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Again, we, as the city council, approved a previous contractor, that contractor's no longer... That contractor's no longer willing to do the work, so now the, the next bidder is before us. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call and adoption, Clerk Doyle.
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Four yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We're at number five on the agenda. This is a resolution to enter into a settlement agreement with DRJ Corporation for damages incurred during lease and to give notice of, on termination of lease. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman James. The administration has the floor.
Thank you. So this relates to the fact that we have now entered into a purchase agreement for the purchase of the former Central High School and that that will soon be the home of our DPW department, which we're very excited about. And as a result, the city no longer needs to lease these substandard premises out on Jocelyn Road, and this is all about exiting that lease and moving in and therefore or thereby moving into Central High School. So with that, I want to turn it over again to our DPW director, Larry Searls, to walk us through the specifics.
All right, thank you, Mayor. As part of the lease, as we used the building, we did specific damages just through our natural operation, our normal operation, heavy equipment on a parking lot, wet, snow, slushy equipment on a wood floor. So we, we, per the lease, we were, we had to pay for those damages that we did, that we did. So that, that happened because of our occupation or use. Their, their engineering team came up with a price, our engineering team came up with a price. They were extremely close. We met in the middle and it's absolutely with, in the terms of the lease to, to pay off the settlement. And then with that, we issue our notice to exit the lease, per the lease document.
Thank you. Any final discussion on the motion? Pro Tem?
The House will call for the vote.
Okay. Sounds like the speakers list is exhausted. Thank you for the information and we look forward to brighter days for a fully functioning Department of Public Works.
And I, and I do want to add, operationally, operations are completely at the Central Building.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll share with the community and the council as we learn more with that transition. Hearing no further discussion on this motion, roll call and adoption, Clerk Doyle.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Director Searls. We're at discussions. Briefly, we're encouraging residents to submit applications for city board and commission volunteer service opportunities to help move the city of Pontiac forward. Those opportunities include the Arts Commission, Beautification Advisory Commission, Board of Appeals, Board of Ethics, Board of Review, Charter Review Board, Construction Code Board of Appeals, Election Commission, Historic District Commission, Income Tax Board of Review, Latin Affairs Advisory Commission, Local Officers Compensation Commission, Marijuana Business Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, Street Signs Commission, Tax Increment Financing Authority, Workforce Development Coordinating Council, Youth Advisory Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and those are the city entities. There is also our partners at the Pontiac Regional Chamber of Commerce. That's a volunteer opportunity. They have board vacancies as well. They've shared with us. So again, we have forms. The city's website has an application form, but we have some interest forms here tonight. Please reach out to the city council offices if you have any questions in the meantime. Some of these are mayoral appointments, some of these are council appointments, some of them are a blend of the both. So we want to make sure that you are good people of Pontiac. If you're interested, you notify us so that way we can have your name in the mix as we make those decisions. Any other discussion on that item? Hearing nothing further, we're at subcommittee reports. An opportunity to report out on the work that's done at the subcommittee level by your city council members. Communications Engagement Operations, any developments that you would like the community and council to know?
No, there is not because the director for Communications position is vacant. Well, I will say, there have been new signs that are popping up, which obviously is a mixture of Parks Recreation, DPW, and also through the city. So if you've been driving around the city, especially on some of the entrance ways coming in, you've seen new Pontiac signs popping up. I was jealous because there was only one on Telegraph and now there's one on Kennet. So I get to see one when I come home every single day. But, you know, that, that is an extension of what Communications Engagement Operations does, and it's good to see that those are finally being put out.
Very good. We are at Economic Development, Housing and Planning. Madam Chair, Councilman Jones.
Okay, so this is an overview of the November 10th meeting. Is that appropriate, Council President?
Of course, yes, ma'am.
Okay, because our subcommittee did meet already this month. First and foremost, the Mark Twain demolition will be finalized around November 14th, which has happened already, so we should be expecting an update regarding that at the next economic development meeting, which will be Monday, November 1st.
December.
December, who, excuse me, December 1st, 2025 at 9:00 AM in the conference room, council conference room. Additionally, there were 28 new sievos issued for the last month. Although grass violations concluded October 21st, there were 54 in October issued and year-to-date, 2,888, which is noteworthy to mention that that number is significantly reduced compared to previous years, which in essence means that more residents are taking pride in their lawn and keeping their grass cut, and that is, that's noteworthy to mention, and I'm very happy to, to hear that. I'm also happy about the gateway signs, which was briefly discussed in a subcommittee meeting, but there is one now on Elizabeth Lake Road, and I was very excited to see that coming home as well. District 5 blitz from code enforcement was completed and three districts, 3 and 4 would be scheduled at, by the end of November, which would be coming up around now. So your council person would have more information about those blitzes. And congratulations to Brianna Fields, who was promoted to team leader. That will be all for, for pertinent updates that were discussed at this meeting.
Thank you very much. We are at Facilities and Property. That chair, Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, is not with us this evening, but some of the items that that subcommittee has been tackling was on the regular agenda tonight. You just heard about the tackling of the tanks at, next door at Public Safety and the, the fire station at Pike Street, but also the work and the matter involving the DPW facility. So those are the few of the most recent items. That committee has also been tracking the construction initiation for the Youth Recreation Center and the demolition to come for the David E. Walt Community Center at Galloway Lake Park, that grant-funded project. Councilman Jones?
I apologize, Council President. There's one more note that I think is really important to mention for the public regarding downtown parking, which did come up in this latest subcommittee meeting. Currently, we are using the Passport app when you park downtown. You enter the zone number, which is on a lot of signs down there. I want to emphasize that the old signage will be removed to reduce confusion because it's been said that the downtown parking processes are confusing for those who are coming in and out and that they're not very easy to follow. The kiosks can be troublesome. Those updates are coming. In fact, there is a new app set to launch in 2026 as well. But year-to-date, through, through November 10th, there were 6,986 paid parking sessions, so not tickets. Over, almost 7,000 individuals who came to the downtown did pay and did not experience complications. However, we are still working to make this process easier, and we certainly don't want to make the downtown area aversive for those who are commuting and coming to visit. So I wanted to mention that. The downtown parking signage will be more clear in the coming weeks and months as we implement these updates. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. So now we are at, on the agenda, number 10, Finance and Personnel. On that subcommittee, I am the chair. Councilman Parker and Councilman James serve with me on that subcommittee as well. An overview, we received preliminary financial statements, consolidated bank statements, the sweep bank statement, bank reconciliation, youth recreation bond, bank statement, year-to-date payroll summary, accounts payable, number of days to pay analysis. We always want to make sure that they're moving through quickly and paying the city's bills on a timely basis, and that's greatly improved over the last year. We also reviewed legal expenses, ARPA spend analysis. And this month, we did a deep dive on our sanitation fund. We have a very healthy sanitation fund. That's what pays the bulk of our trash collection, and that was important because city council and the next mayor will have to make some policy decisions on, do we make any changes to sanitation or recycling? Also, and as we pursue grant funding, we just know where we're looking at with the health of that fund. Right now, the general fund, unassigned fund balance, AKA the money that's in reserve and, and unassigned, unspent, is 67.5 million as of the end of October, a very substantial amount, the highest that it has been in these last four years and beyond. A very healthy and substantial general fund, unassigned fund balance, and we'll keep tracking that as payments hit and all that, all that jazz. A noteworthy point is that the audit is on track. Auditors were on site last week. They're targeting the completion date for the city's responsibilities for the audit by late November or early December, well in advance of the end of the year, December 31st, ordinance and requirement for that to be submitted. When it comes to the Youth Recreation Center, the bond was successfully closed on October 30th, so the $20 million bonded portion of the Youth Recreation Center construction project is successfully completed. As you heard us share last month, we have a very favorable bond rating of AA-, the highest in the city's history, and a giant change from 14 years ago when it was at CCC junk bond status. And because of that healthy bond rating, that has allowed us to have a very advantageous bond closing. So we will have at the city council, our next meeting, we'll begin considering a budget amendment to reflect that, those additional resources and the debt service that would begin next year for the construction project underway. And so for time, I'll leave it at that, although we did get updates from grants and philanthropy, open grants, grants they're pursuing, human resources and some of the different opportunities and challenges there, as well as the progress of treasury, income tax procurement. Since I see him in the audience tonight, I want to give a very strong shout out to procurement manager, Adam Kaden, that's in the room. Let's give him a hand because he's been doing a great job with that division of the finance department. Thanks for letting us throw you, throw you above the bus? I don't know. But anyway, thank you for your work. If there's no questions, I'll move now to Law and the Courts. Councilman Parker chairs that subcommittee.
Thank you, Brother President, and along with me is Councilman Jones and Councilman Goodman. We met on October 27th, report from 50th Court District that the, that the court is applying for grant funding from the state. They are certainly, Judge, Judge Gross is out for medical reasons and returning, will should be returning back at the end of November, and currently they are fully staffed. Judge Bowie, who has also been selected as chief judge, is also selected for the 40 under 40 recommendations. The Civil Division is catching up on the my-file listing, the suggestions that they don't do a hybrid, don't do hybrid cases, and that there's no current date or before there be 100% on incoming, incoming data. They're doing some training through the whole system for staff on the my-file system. Send email to find out dates for pre-hearing conferences, they need to do that. They looking at doing four half-days per month to include rental and housing inspections. For state court, Supreme Court is looking for ideas to fund court, court for statewide or find, fund courts statewide in all the districts. The Wi-Fi stopped due to employees issues on the first floor, oh, no, for employee issues, period. First floor is complete. They're doing temporary repair for back stairs, not, they, they did some, but then they're not sure whether they're working or they're crumbling. The HVAC is doing well for code enforcement with Brother Jack McIntyre year-to-date for code infections, for infections, inspections and violations. October was, according to my note, was 149, year-to-date was 27,076. For rental, it was 11,524. For grass violations, 888. Rents in escrow so far is 33 total. There is issued 231 court tickets in regards to rental inspections. There was 43 court abatements, 24 demolition orders, grass violations already covered, court appearances 13. And that is, no, sorry, got to head page two. Certainly, most of this is certainly nuisance property, using CPDG funds, see if they can remedy. Clemis update is going well, need to do some practice runs, 100% upgrade by mid-January 2025. Phoenix Court did a court settlement, suspended all units and muted families. Parking, worked, recertified by fire department with all the things that was going on at the Phoenix Court. Meeting with new apps to support supplies regarding parking and meters downtown. Flowbird seeking new app will replace all signage at cost. Kiosk has been replaced. Park Mobile provided grid where signs should be late, and I think she, Councilman Jones gave me, thank you, Councilman Jones gave the little report on that as well. As regards to Lancaster Village, agreed to inspection start with escrow or history with escrow suggested 10 months, recommended 30, 30 days. Escrow, everything must be paid, circuit rule, the ownership issue of having to complete repair, and that is my report. Our next meeting would be December 15th at 4:30 PM. Thank you, it's my report. Thank you, as I stumbled through it.
Oh, no, no, it was very substantial. Thank you for all your hard work. Councilman James, who chairs Parks, Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee, you have the floor.
Yes, our subcommittee met October 17th. Our Council President McGinnis and Council Pro Tem also served with me on that committee. I have a couple of things that we want to go over. First of all, the top issues with the Parks Subcommittee is that we are in the process of redoing our Parks and Recreation five-year master plan that is on track to be finalized and hopefully approved by February of 2026. The second issue is the city of Pontiac currently has a park deficit with the DNR. We are in final stages of resolution with that. It's been a long process. It, you know, it prevents us from being able to apply for DNR grants. We can't apply for them, but we would be penalized, we would have an automatic penalty against us until this deficit is resolved. But we are finally at the closing, hopefully, the closing items for that. So we hope to have it done, wrapped up by the end of the year, but it's possible that it could run into the next administration. The city of Pontiac is participating in discussions with the repurpose of the Frost Elementary Schools. You know, the preschool was there, they've moved to the Whitmer Resource Center, and they are looking at ways that that building can be shared via shared space for various different organizations. That discussion is ongoing. Martin Luther King Bridge, the bid was $9,122,164, and the, they have received the approval from the CN Railroad, so now we're all set with CN Railroad and demolition is going to start, I believe in, I don't have the dates here, but the demolition will be starting soon. Martin Luther King Boulevard is complete, the Meadow Drive extension is ongoing, the Auburn Road work is to be completed, the date that was given was to be reopened by December 15th. The Woodward Loop, we have had, MDOT has announced a delay for the Woodward Loop project, and I'm going to let Mike, Mike is going to talk about the latest that has come out, but just know that there has been an announced delay for the Woodward Loop project. Mike?
Thank you. Yes, so work is underway currently, but it's about the stuff underground, the utility work, working on easements and getting where are the telecommunications line, the gas line, the electric, the water, you name it. And so that work is already started and underway. You've seen some temporary lane closures and them working to change where the lines are going and where the leads are. So that-
So that, that's the current utility phase. That'll be going for the next six months or so through next summer. And sometimes you will see lane closures on the Woodward Loop as they're doing that, and on Huron or M-59. They may, for some days, close the full stretch of M-59 coming into next spring and summer, but we'll find out more, what's the exact date on that. Again, this is a state-led project. So that's the current utility phase we're in, and that's what's causing them to have to spread out some of their timeline because of how much work it, a lot of these are infrastructure that dates back over a hundred years, and there's no record about where they even were underground. So they've had to do a lot of diagnostics to find out where's the nineteen-ten gas line, you know, and all that jazz. So, next fall, twenty twenty-six begins stage one, and that involves the conversion of Pike Street from one-way to two-way. Right now, at the library, you can't go eastbound on Pike by the library. They've got to change that, so that way, ahead of them closing M-59 or Huron, it can allow traffic to flow through the downtown. So that's coming next year and into next spring. They will also be having the Huron Street work ongoing that we spoke about, and there will be in twenty twenty-seven, a full closure of Huron or M-59 in the downtown loop, meaning M-59 on both sides of the loop in twenty twenty-seven. So, you know, we're talking after next year, then we go into twenty twenty-seven, M-59's getting fully redone. Then the next stage, in spring and fall of twenty twenty-seven, they're going to be closing Cass Avenue for resurfacing and conversion of Cass Avenue from one-way to two-way. Right now, Cass Avenue is like a one-way freeway that feeds into the Woodward Loop. In twenty twenty-seven, they'll be making it two-way and resurfaced. Stage two, spring of twenty twenty-eight, there will be lane closures on Woodward to reconstruct Saginaw Street, essentially where they're going to feed or connect our downtown Main Street of Saginaw into the Woodward flow. That comes in the spring of twenty twenty-eight. Also, in that spring and summer, stage three begins, where there will be full closure of northbound Woodward Avenue to construct the new Chief Pontiac Boulevard, AKA the stretch of the current loop right outside of the city hall. And then they will go in stages, the different sections of the Woodward Loop. Again, this is summer two thousand twenty-eight. After they do this section, which goes basically from the beginning of the loop to M-59, then they'll do the section of M-59, looks like to Perry. Later in the summer of twenty-eight, they're going to handle that section. And then in summer, later that summer of twenty-eight, they'll do from Perry to Saginaw. And then the final stage, stage five, fall of twenty twenty-eight, they'll do the Saginaw curving around by Cass Avenue and then to the other side of M-59. So we'll have a lot of growing pains to work through as a community, but they're trying to make it so that way, the sort of pieces of the snake are cut up at different times, so that way, there can still be some flow of traffic and the detours aren't crazy. So the good news is, it's not like the whole Woodward Loop is offline for some crazy period of time. It's in segments and sections, and part of the challenge is, and the opportunity, is that we've got the roads that crisscross through, cut us through the downtown, they will be done in a way that it's not all at once. So that way, we don't have, you know, we're not stopped or snarled with all the east-west roads. Right now, of course, we have Orchard Lake and Auburn is down where the Phoenix Center was. That work will be progressing, and that will be reopened ahead of this. And we have this Pike Street action that'll happen, that that'll be ahead of this. And so that way, when M-59 does come offline for a while, for them to do that quick work, looks like it'll be scheduled quick, that we've still got the loop going and those other east-west roads, and when they're doing the loop part, we got all the east-west roads. So we'll work through that together, but that's the current update that we have, and we'll track it as there is variation.
Thank you. It does represent, thank you, President McGinnis, it does represent a change in what they had originally, the timing that they had originally announced, so it's a big deal, and so we wanted you to be aware of that. The carbon reduction, we got a grant to replace our older light fixtures with LED, that is ongoing. Deputy Director Searls did say that DPW would be conducting an audit of all the streetlights in the city. They're going to do a night audit, just going through the city to determine what, and we've had a lot of comments about streetlights being out, it's a big concern. We would be talking about that, but unfortunately, our meeting that was scheduled, and for those who would normally attend our meetings, that was scheduled for Friday, November the twenty-first, that meeting has been canceled due to scheduling conflicts. That meeting has been canceled, so there will be no Parks Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee in the month of November. However, we will be following up with Director Searls in regards to the audit and what they plan to do with that audit. I've also had complaints for Walton, some of them have been in over, you know, for months, and it's been reported, but that's about all the information that we're able to get, and residents are concerned about that. So we need to talk to Director Searls to understand, what are we going to do about these long-term outages? And because, at the very least, I think we owe residents some kind of explanation about why it's taking so long to get these lights fixed. So even though we won't have a meeting, I will be talking to Director Searls to understand what the plan is for these light outages that are long-term. The gateway signs are installed, and from District Four's perspective, they've been well-received. Hopefully, they've been received the same way with the other districts. Speed cushions have all been installed now. Bodet Park bathrooms are, should be reopened momentarily. We have not been directed as to the exact date, but I do believe they are finalizing everything at this point, and they are expected to be open sometime in November. And I think that is all we have for, yeah, that's all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public Safety, Health and Wellness Subcommittee chaired by Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Public Safety and Health and Wellness Committee did not meet last month, it meets bi-monthly. So our next meeting is December eleventh. Council, Councilman Parker and Councilman James is a part of that committee. A very, a great, actually, a special shout-out to the Oakland County Sheriff Department, who has kept us apprised, I'm sorry, who had. (laughter) My God! Had kept us apprised of the few tragedies that this community has established. It's been a long work week for me, so please forgive me. A few tragedies in our community, so again, I'd like to thank the Oakland County Sheriff Department for that. They continue to do some good work when tragedies happen, and they actually, in a very precise, timely manner, get that information to myself, as well as the rest of the council. So again, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Subcommittee reports. We are at closing comments. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to answer the question posed by a member of the audience. My understanding of the question is that she was asking whether trash pickup will be affected by the closure of City Hall the day after Thanksgiving. And the short answer is that because the city of Pontiac, like the vast majority of cities these days, contracts with private entities, the schedule of trash pickup is not about whether or not City Hall is open, it's based on that private contractor's pickup. So that's all about what priority waste, normal pickup schedule is, and it's not about whether or not City Hall is closed on a given day.
Councilman Goodman has indicated he has a motion. Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
Yes. So quickly to my colleagues, similar to a couple meetings ago, we will not be treating this as an actual first reading. I simply want to be able to make sure that all of you have this to read over the next, what, was it a week, two weeks into our next meeting? So I have a motion to suspend the rules to take up something that's not originally on the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Jones, to suspend the rules to take up an item not on the established agenda order. Any discussion on the motion before us? Yes, sir.
So, is he asking us to approve this tonight?
No, he wants to suspend the rules to introduce it.
Okay.
And then postpone it, if I have that correctly.
Correct.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any discussion further on that motion? Hearing on roll call, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Harker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Six shays, no nays.
That motion carries, the rules are suspended for the purposes of introducing a new item. Councilman Goodman, would you like to make your motion?
Yes, I would like to bring forth a ordinance to establish requirements for written leases, prorated rents, receipts, and fee disclosures.
So it has been, a resolution for consideration of a first reading of an ordinance amendment has been moved by Councilman Goodman. Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilwoman James, excuse me, Jones. Do you have a question, Councilwoman James?
I couldn't hear the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Best way to describe it, an ordinance to amend Chapter twenty-two of our building ordinance around our housing code and rental properties, so Article six, Division ten, to establish requirements for written leases, prorated rent, receipts, and fee disclosures.
And that is the document that he distributed mid-meeting?
Correct.
So it's been moved and seconded, it's now before us. Would you like to make a motion to postpone to the next meeting?
Very briefly, I will, can I mention what it's for and then?
Okay, okay. All right, you have the floor.
Yep, I will, just so you guys have time to look over it, because I want to make sure we have.
I know, you're fine.
Primarily, so you've seen the multiple things that we've been doing around housing, this is to clean up specifically things that involve the written lease portion, because again, you would be surprised how many problems exist within that. So requiring that the, that landlords have written leases for all of their tenants, making sure that a tenant is given a copy of that lease, having a prorated rent requirement so for people who move in halfway through a month, you're not being charged the full amount, which again, a lot of landlords do, but trying to make it more across the board, making sure that landlords provide receipts for rent paid in cash. So if you're paying cash to your landlord, no matter what, you should get a receipt for that, that way, you can prove that you have been paying rent. And then also having a disclosure of fees, so on the paperwork, whether it be the ad or the lease, they actually have to list what the, the non-debatable fees are. So oftentimes, for people, that can be the random community fee that you have to pay, that's fifty dollars every single month, but there's no really, no real community space. Or if you're required to pay a parking space fee, that should be listed upfront with your rent, opposed to you finding out after you've moved in that you're now paying, you know, a hundred and fifty in fees that you didn't know about prior. So we're not voting on this tonight, I simply wanted to give the context for you, the chance to read it, and over the next two weeks, if you have any questions or concerns or language amendments that you'd like to see added, you know, we can work on that and have them ready for the next meeting. But I just want to make sure that we all had a chance to have it and look at it, look at it between now and the next meeting.
Thank you. Pro Tem?
Just a quick question for the councilman.
Yes.
Are you talking to the city attorney concerning these amendments? I just want to make sure that we're keeping everything in perspective of law.
So every single ordinance that has been introduced from this housing, tenant bill of rights, was sent to the attorneys months prior to this, and there have been, there has been no pushback or negativity from the lawyers, and they have had every single one of these ordinances.
Okay. So had they given you any kind of?
Feedback.
Feedback concerning them, that's what I'm asking, or they just haven't given you any feedback?
Well, what we'll do is, now that this is sort of inserted into the bloodstream, we will ask the explicit question of this draft, in this version, does the city attorney have any further review or feedback? But yes, in June, the city council, Councilman Goodman and the city council began that process, I want to say in May, but we took a vote in June of saying, here are the different, fourteen different categories. These were a few of those categories. So it's been, you know, a good over six months that that initiation, but this is going to have to be further continuation and further review.
And also, I just say, I would love for them to look at it that way, because obviously there's going to be some fine-tuning of the language to make sure that it fits into the right spot within our code, so obviously, I'd have to look at it then as well. But there has been no screaming or glaring issues about these ordinances since the lawyers have seen them, at least initially.
Very good. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to postpone to the next city council meeting?
Moved.
Yes, support.
Moved by Councilwoman Jones, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we postpone this resolution for a first reading to the December second city council meeting. Any clarity or discussion on the motion to postpone? Hearing none, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Harker? Six shays, no nays.
That motion carries, it's postponed to the next city council meeting, so further research and review and feedback is welcomed and is in the works. We'll resume now closing comments. Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Thank you, Council President. Following up on the mayor's comments, as per usual, the Thanksgiving holiday, no garbage will be collected, so Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, your garbage days will be normal. Thursday, no garbage will be collected, and so that will shift everyone's garbage day one day forward into the future.
Clerk Doyle, closing comments?
No comments, Mr. President.
All right, we'll go in numerical order, District Two.
Thank you, Council President. I want to take a moment to express how happy I am that the WRC project is almost over. It has been, it's a rough, it's a rough show, it's a rough road, but those infrastructure improvements are going to help us for the years to come. I mean, they're very beneficial. We're blessed to have received that grant funding from WRC, so not a city initiative, but nonetheless, we partnered to be sure that communication flowed smoothly and that public safety was, you know, at the forefront of, of, excuse me, of the contractors' concern. And so through this process, eventually, a streamlined process was introduced, an email, emailing list, so to speak, providing updates for the entire District Two areas. And that helped, you know, me to facilitate communication with residents, and also helped residents to know what is going on, where are we in this process, and more importantly, when is this going to be over? So I am happy to say, and even driving by, I can, even driving by, I can see the improvements that are happening, I can see the finish line ahead, I can see Voorhees with the initial asphalt coat, and I know the second one is, you know, just days away, and then that will be opened up, and then we move to Indian Village and et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to say, I will continue to share updates within the next two weeks, hopefully by the next city council meeting, I can just say it's over. But I will continue to share those updates. If you have any questions, please call or email me, two four eight seven five eight three zero two seven, or mjones@poniac.mi.us. I also wanted to mention that I wanted to actually thank SEMCOG and the administration for, you know, pursuing that grant for replacing the street bulbs. This obviously does not solve any infrastructure concerns relating to streetlights or those exterior lights, but it does enable us to change the light bulb to an LED light across the city. And now that we have approved that in the consent agenda today, to accept those funds, that process can get moving. So I just wanted to, you know, thank everyone who had a hand in that. Thank you, Mayor Grimal, for, you know, securing our relationship with SEMCOG again, which hadn't been done in some time. You're not often given the credit, you know, for the things that you do, and I wanted to be sure I said that on the floor, that has helped our community, not just in grant funding, but in regional. That has helped our community, not just in grant funding, but in regional connectivity and regional progress. So, to wrap up, I'm sure I'm out of time.
I never started the clock, so.
I want to wrap up by giving a shout-out to Stone Gate Point subdivision, north of Elizabeth Lake Road. The Parks HOA leadership led a food drive over this past weekend, where they stayed outside for a certain number of hours and allowed people to come drop off any extra non-perishable items or cash donations that they had. They partnered with Lighthouse of Michigan, and a total of 550 pounds of food and $240 in cash donations was accumulated during that food drive over the weekend, and all of that was delivered to Lighthouse. So, a thank you to Stone Gate Point, the Parks HOA leadership. I don't want to start naming names, because then I'll forget someone, but the Parks HOA leadership, thank you for spearheading that. It could not have been more timely. Right now, we all know what is going on with SPNA benefits, with, well, what could be happening with all benefits. And we know that food is a, it's a hot commodity, but it's a right. You should be able to eat, you shouldn't feel forced to steal just to be sure that you eat. So, any donation, any drive, any, you know, act of kindness we can do in the community is very beneficial and goes a long way. To wrap up, the District Two meeting, Collaborate and Elevate, will be happening this Saturday. This coming Monday will be the Community Advisory Meeting, and just to differentiate those, this Saturday's meeting will be at 374 North Telegraph Road. Monday's meeting will be at Goldner Walsh at 7:00 PM, led by Jen Burke. Please email her or email me to get her contact information, and I can give that to you so that you can contact her if you have any questions about that meeting. District Two nominations are open right now until December 1st, honoring community champions, District Two Legacy Award and Rising Star Award, because as we have a higher turnover in District Two, for whatever reason, a lot of community members continue to do their all and really go, they spearhead initiatives to be sure that the district stays connected and that information is spread, and we need to acknowledge those individuals, even if they aren't doing it for acknowledgement. That closes my comments, and I'm sure I'll be timed next time.
You often have very brief updates, so don't be hard on yourself. All right, Councilman Goodman, District Three.
Yeah, I mean, just very excited to be able to continue serving as a councilperson for District Three, even in its new configuration, which me and Councilman James probably need to talk, so I can, you know, do some nice exchange of residents. But there has been some work being done, some work patching that has been being done by Code, not Code Enforcement, by DPW, and I've noticed, because I'm driving over the cold patch, or what could possibly still be a hot patch at this moment. I'm trying to think if there's anything that is deeply, deeply relevant at the moment, besides the lead lines being changed, which I missed the announcement for, but that's very exciting to hear.
You got a welcome sign.
Oh, well, I keep talking about the welcome sign. Yeah, the welcome sign that is on Kenneth, so if you want to, I almost want to make a little bit of a district competition out of it.
Go tick-tock your sign.
But like, you know, if you haven't had a chance to yet, and you're driving in the area of Kenneth, take a picture of the sign, maybe take a picture with the sign and post it. I mean, that'd be cool to see. But, you know, generally, it is very nice to see that the gateways to our city, but our city as a whole is improving. It, I'm actually at the point now where, when I'm driving, I see like, oh, that's a fresh coat of paint on something, or, oh, that's this thing that has been like, at some point, I am now beginning to see the collective change that has been long worked on. So, I'm just excited to be able to continue that, be able to continue that with a great group of people. And again, being able to continue to provide and fight for a somewhat new section of the safety. So, I'll leave it there.
Thank you. District Four, Councilwoman James.
Yes, I just have one announcement, and that is from the New Mount Mariah International Church, where we hold our meetings every month. It's located at 313 Walton Boulevard, across from the Dollar Tree Store. They will be holding a food giveaway this coming Saturday, November the 22nd. So, if you know of any families that could use some food, New Mount Mariah will be giving away free food this Saturday at the church, 313 Walton Boulevard, from 12 to 4. So, please help us to get that message out, and that's the only message, that's the only announcement that I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. District Five, Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Brother President. First, I wanted to say, the District Five December meeting is still being planned. We could not find a large enough space for all the folks that's planning on coming, so that's being worked on. Also, I want to remind everybody, at the New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church, we'll be doing their monthly food giveaway, beginning on Thursday and through Saturday for this month, because it's Thanksgiving, and we want to make sure that we try to help meet the needs of those who may need a Thanksgiving dinner, as well as just regular food. I also want to share with you a flyer that I got from the Valentinos, and I'll just read what it says. It says, "Everybody's a family at Valentinos, and as family, we are honored to gift a traditional Thanksgiving meal to anyone in the community in need of a simple, looking for the, in need," I'm sorry, reading this wrong. We are, let me just start over, "for Valentinos, we gift a traditional Thanksgiving meal to anyone in the community in need of or simply looking for the company of family. So, come out and join us and let us take care of your Thanksgiving meal. It's on us and should, okay with, we give with our pleasure." That is on Thanksgiving Day from 12 to 4, at Valentinos, 940 Jocelyn Boulevard. Please come out and, also looking for volunteers to help serve, if you have a moment or two that you want to come serve. In addition to that, the Baldwin Center is looking for those who are maybe free on Thanksgiving. I believe they start at 5:00 PM, to come and help serve. And with that, I say good evening to everybody.
Thank you. District Six, Pro Tem William Carrington.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I just want to make a special shout-out to the DPW Department, as well as Code Enforcement. I know I call a lot, and residents call a lot as well, but I actually want to thank you guys for making sure that you hear the residents, as well as work with me to make the sixth district the best district in the city of Pontiac. Another shout, a special thanks to the DPW Department for the MLK and Victory work that's been, that's been going on for the last past two or three weeks. That area is looking very, very much a lot better. Also, the bigger street signs is so much important, where you can actually see what street that you're turning on and going past. So, I definitely like those new signs that you guys are putting up. The last District Six meeting, under the current city charter, is December the 18th, at the Ruth Peterson Senior Center. So, those that are living in the sixth district, please come out to that last meeting. We'll be giving away a lot of, raffling off a lot of free gifts that's going to be given to the community. It's going to be a day of thanks, a day of celebration, a day of thinking about and looking back on the last four years of what we achieved in that district. So, please come out. I want to talk with you and, and just hear some of your concerns as we move into the new year. I'd like to end with a quote, "The community atmosphere that we create will determine the product we produce." Now, I wholeheartedly believe that, that if we work together collectively in our communities across the city, we will continue to allow the city to grow, continue to rise, continue to be great. Again, good night.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, I'm Mike McGinnis, District Seven, City Councilperson. We had a fantastic event, our District Seven East Side Community Meeting last night at the Salvation Army. Full house, great participation, and as part of that, we awarded our District Seven Beautification Awards. Since the Pride Beautification Awards weren't able to happen as the City Council had intended and scheduled, I was just basically handling it district by district. And so for our district, I want to give a shout-out, they, I was able to surprise every one of the residents. Residents, it was great. So, the residents that received the awards were Cynthia Carr Lee from Charles Lane, the Bloomfield Townhouses, and Inez Smith on Clifford Street, and Tracy Coleman on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. So, I was able to surprise each of them as our top resident beautification advocates and improvers of not only their property, but their neighborhood as well, advocating for their neighborhood. And we were able to present to Mr. Prince Carr on Northeastway, his award from last year, because he wasn't at that celebration. So, we were able to present those four. And then the organizations or businesses for District Seven on the East Side, we did Michigan Animal Rescue League at Featherstone and MLK. They've done such an amazing job renovating and expanding, we wanted to celebrate them. They were pumped. They really were able to make a lot of great community connections, it was great to have them last night. Brilliant Pontiac, the organization that's developed a literacy hub on Perkins Street, at the former home of Manny McKinney Hatchet. Amazing renovation and a community space, we honored them. And Paddock Vehicle Storage, which took an empty, rundown former party store at Osman and Paddock, and we're able to make a new facility there, and they've, they're expanding now to Osman and Jesse. We celebrated the way in which they've really beautified that space, and more work to come. We covered last night some updates on the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, streetlight improvements that are underway, and a lot of progress made there, the construction on Auburn, and answered a lot of questions on that. And as you can see, they're making quick progress with the new apartments being constructed at Auburn and Sanford. The Auburn Place Apartments by Lighthouse, you can literally see, when I saw last night, there's a whole, there's things that are above ground. It's pretty impressive, as they do the column for the, I think, the stairwells and elevator shafts. So, check it out, if you haven't driven by there. We have our district end-of-the-year celebration for District Seven, our last hurrah, as the number of lucky number seven for our council district, is on Monday, December 8th, 7:00 PM, at the Salvation Army Holland Center, the community is invited, and we will be celebrating champions from the East Side and coming together and sharing information and resources, but having fun in the holiday season. Please join us on December 8th. Tomorrow, the city is having a press conference to share more information about our new down payment assistance program. Mayor Grimaldi and the City Council have worked on multiple fronts to try and improve homeownership in the city. We need to have more homeowners, and we want a pathway to generational wealth that owning a home provides Pontiac residents. We want to encourage and grow that. So, you'll be learning more, and at the next City Council meeting, we'll try and amplify some of that information. And so those are my City Council updates. I am in the unique position, the first time in 40-something years at least, maybe longer, where we have a City Councilperson, let alone a City Council President, will be our next mayor, starting in early January. So, I am still our City Council President, still your councilperson for the East Side, so please keep your requests and complaints and feedback coming. But I'm also working hard to try and hit the ground running and be prepared for the awesome and intense responsibility and opportunity to be our great city's next mayor. So, I said it before in different forums and formats, but thank you. From the bottom of my heart, thank you to my neighbors for the opportunity to help us move forward over the next four years, in that capacity of getting ready for that responsibility and that term to begin in early January. I have formed a transition team, and I'll be announcing that publicly, that work is beginning, and we will also have a portal in which those that are interested in working with the city, or serving on a border commission or volunteering otherwise, there will be an online portal where that submission can happen. I'll share those opportunities in the days ahead as well. So, more information to come on that front, but thank you again, and I'll work my tail off. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Support.
It's been moved by Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilwoman Jones, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion, roll call Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
It's because Billy.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six shays.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 8:19 PM. Until we meet again, please be safe and God bless you.